It's not on the record. I want to welcome everyone to this April 5th City Commission Workshop. It does strangely feel like we just left here a few hours ago, and many of us did. But now we're on to an exciting subject today where we'll get a little bit of an update on the state of public infrastructure in our city. And very, very appreciative of all the staff who are here today to present, but also to you all and as an extension of you, the folks who work for you, who do an exceptional job every day trying to make sure that we keep this city looking good and up to speed. I don't know if we have the appropriate expertise at the table now, but I know that we're expecting some inclement weather this afternoon. And I believe that the Emergency Operations Center has been partially bought online. Either the City Manager or whomever you may want to yield to would love to hear if there is any information that you'd want the public to know at this time. If not, we can move directly into the presentation. City Manager?
Yes, sir. So it was activated, partially activated, at 11:30 today. And we will continue to get updates as our business progresses. And if there's any information to share, we will share with you and you can share with the public.
Great. Thank you very much. City Manager, I'll go ahead and actually prior to the agenda, excuse me, we'll take any public speakers who have any comments to make as relates to today's agenda.
I don't have any speakers, Mayor.
None? None? Any others? Okay. All right, then we'll move directly into the presentation. I'll yield the microphone to the City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. During last year's budget process, you established public infrastructure as a high priority. In our workshop today, we would like to provide an update on our efforts up to date. We will provide an overview of selected capital project activity and highlight a few current projects. The majority of today's presentation, however, will focus on a master plan for the maintenance of our roads and sidewalks that will result in the lowest cost approach to properly maintain our critical infrastructure. Progress has been made on a current assessment of our roads and sidewalks since last October. And while the work is not complete, it has advanced to a stage that we can provide you an update on the current conditions and general outlook. Your Assistant City Managers are here along with all the key staff. And I'd like to ask Riesko to introduce today's presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, Mayor, Commissioners. I'll be quick. We've got a lengthy presentation. We tend to be excited about this subject matter, but sometimes it's not so exciting. It's just things we have to do. And I'd like to introduce those folks that are going to walk us through this presentation. I'm joined by John Bus. He's Assistant General Manager of the Underground Utilities and Public Infrastructure Department, as well as Jody Cahoon, as well as Blas Gomez and Steve Schaefer. They're led by Mike Tadros. He's with me on my right. These gentlemen are going to walk us through the presentation. And as the Manager said, we're going to give some background information on select projects, but the thrust of today's conversation is going to be about roads and sidewalks and really about the approach and technique that over the last number of months approaching a year now, that these gentlemen and their colleagues have been using to make sure we've got a good planning approach, a good outlook on how we maintain our infrastructure and keep it in a repaired state. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to John Bus to make some introductory comments, and we'll move to the presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Bus.
Good afternoon. We do have a lot to cover, but I would like to comment on just a couple of related observations, really, of the work and the process improvements that we're going to discuss. I really think that the reorganization that we went through a year ago, January, really has created a lot of opportunity in that it blended the technical expertise of the public works, the former public works operations people and engineering people with the master planning and asset management focus of the Utilities Department, particularly with regard to some of the work we've done in process improvement. And that's what you're going to hear a lot about today, process improvement. Where we're moving is something you've never seen before. It's a brand-new approach to street maintenance. Haven't seen it before in that we're applying new technology to do a level of planning and coordination that previously wasn't possible. We're moving from qualitative to quantitative assessments that are repeatable, that are numbers-driven. That allows us to go through an iterative process to seek out, you know, nothing is perfect, all models are wrong, some are useful, we like to say, but allow you to seek out the cost-effective overall mix of different maintenance methods. So, you know, we're doing modeling now that wasn't done before. Additionally, you'll see that we're now planning across the organization to a larger degree that's definitely an offshoot of the reorganization again. You know, we don't coordinate the street work with the utility guys. We're all in the same group. Work plans really need to be coordinated a year and more in advance, and so it's iterative, if you will. All right. As the City Manager said, this street assessment, which was one of your priorities, is not yet complete, but I would like to say it's come a very long ways in a very short order. It was just over a year ago that we organized, and it was even less since you, in your retreat, established a street condition review as one of your priorities. So in less than a year, we have assessed over 6,000 roadway segments and pushed those numbers. It's not complete, but it is far enough along that we think it's useful for you to have this background discussion prior to moving into the FY18 budget cycle. With that backstory, we'll start with the summary of the overall level of infrastructure construction activity, both new and capital projects. We have a slide on which we have shown the location of approximately 213, not approximately, 213 capital projects that are included in the Underground Public Infrastructure Capital Budget for FY17. I show this for two reasons. To give you an idea of the number and distribution of our activities, if you added maintenance into this, street resurfacing, this is capital projects, if you added maintenance and sidewalk ramp improvements for ADA, et cetera, that would probably double. So we're in a lot of places. We try to get it right, but we have lots of opportunities for things to go wrong. And I know you hear from residents sometime about night work, or noise, or dust, but when you look at that, there's a lot of work going on. The other point I want to make with this is to call attention to the economic impact of the work that you fund. On any given day, we probably have on the order of 10 or so large construction projects. By that, I mean big excavators out on the road and roads closed, et cetera. Also, on any given day, we probably have 50 to 75 other construction activities going on. Again, I mentioned perhaps some resurfacing, or a sidewalk, or a sidewalk ramp. What that translates to is on any given day, there are probably 800 to 1,000 people employed on our capital and maintenance projects, and I don't mean just city employees, the bulk of those would be private individuals working for contractors. So this activity has real economic impact. In addition, it has a real impact for many, many of our residents. You're solving problems that they encounter and overall improving quality of life. So there's a lot of work going on, and we're happy to have your interest in the topic and in the funding of priorities. With that said, I want to hand this off to Jody Cahoon, who is the Manager of Stormwater Management. He's going to give you some specific examples of how the stormwater work that you fund solves problems, supports your other initiatives, and improves quality of life.
Thank you, John. I'm going to describe two areas where stormwater is a key component in achieving the vision and the goals that you, the Commission, and the community have established. The first being the downtown area. We wanted to create an 18-hour destination, a place where people truly want to be, a more vibrant downtown that's pedestrian-friendly and very walkable. An important element in achieving this vision was to eliminate the need for onsite stormwater facilities in the downtown area. Not having these facilities allows for denser development. It creates a more multimodal and walkable environment, and also eliminates these unsightly facilities in the downtown area that frequently are when you deal with these small-type facilities. Makes for optimum use of the downtown real estate, which has higher values. What we did is we partnered with FSU, we created a regional facility on Lake Bradford Road. We refer to it as Lake Alberta Park now, and this created the storage and treatment volume needed to eliminate these onsite facilities. But guess what? You've got to get the water down to these facility. We've got to create that infrastructure. So we embarked upon a master plan and infrastructure improvements for the downtown area. We focused on the area from City Hall and up around the Capitol, down to Gaines and Falmouth Way, over to the stadium, and south of Park Avenue. This area, which is shown on this slide, is bounded roughly by that zebra-colored line and contains about 400 acres. Now, we identified parcels and areas within this 400 acres that were prone to redevelop or were likely to redevelop and infill. We analyzed every single pipe within this 400-acre sub-basin, every single pipe. We used some of the most advanced and cutting-edge technology, which included LiDAR and aerials and field survey. And I'm going to geek out for you a little bit here. We actually took that information, created a surface of the earth, created that, cut that surface into five-foot grid squares so that we could model and simulate the water flowing, not only just through the pipes, but across the surface of the land. Because when you try to encourage dense development and build out to the curb line, that water's got to travel down the roads to get in the pipes, and it's going to travel between buildings. We wanted an accurate estimate of what would happen to the water so that we could help plan for the future and design flood-resistant buildings and structures. Again, this is cutting-edge technology that's really going to carry us far into the future. This slide shows the infrastructure efforts that we've done or have planned to done. I'm proud to say the yellow segments have already been completed. They represent about $8 million worth of infrastructure improvements. The red segment is currently under construction, and the blue segments are elements to still be constructed. These improvements will total over $13 million worth of infrastructure improvements. When I talk about stormwater infrastructure, a lot of folks don't get excited. These projects are very complex and difficult. Drainage is the largest infrastructure in the roadway. We're not talking about something the size of your wrist or even your waist. We're talking about very large structures. This is one of our recent construction projects. That drainage inlet that you see there is about the size of a dump truck. The hole that you see in that structure is to accommodate a future pipe. That hole and that pipe are big enough for a man to walk through. So when you're dealing in a downtown corridor or trying to retrofit and put in this type of infrastructure, it's very, very challenging. It's very complex. Coordination with stakeholders, it's a nightmare, but it's what we do. You're talking about coordinate with businesses, planned developments, things that are going on, even events that occur in the downtown area. It's very challenging to implement these, and as John said, it doesn't always go perfect. Give you one example, one of our pipes that we recently did, there was no more room in Madison Street or Gaines Street, and we needed to get a stormwater infrastructure pipe through there. So we ran mid-block between Madison and Gaines Street, around the parking garages and through the buildings. When we got to one segment, one of our pipes had to be built in the access road to this parking garage. Luckily, it was mostly student housing, so there was a downtime there between when after graduation and folks move out and in the fall semester. But that was only two and a half months that we had to work with the landowner to get in there and do it. And that's just one example of the complexity and the difficulty of these stormwater projects Again, these projects are very complex, but I'm proud to say that we have completed the vast majority of them in the downtown area. Our infrastructure plan and our infrastructure is not perfect, but we're positioned very well to carry us into the future. To give you a perspective, over the last 20 years, we've built about 17 acres of new impervious surface area in this area. Our master plan will position us so that we can have capacity for another 60 acres. So again, we're positioned to carry us many decades ahead. Very proud of what we've accomplished. The next area I'd like to discuss with you is our infrastructure efforts in the Market District area. As you know, Market District is an area where we want to create and foster a unique sense of place. One of the goals of the Market District at Master Plan was to create or reclaim public use spaces, with one of the big elements being repurposing the two stormwater facilities in the center of Market District. This was identified as a top priority of some of the citizens and businesses. It's a challenge to create the desired setting out there. We have to blend uncomplimentary and necessary uses such as an electric stub station, transmission lines, along with stormwater and roadway improvements to try to create an aesthetically attractive district that will serve as a regional destination. The next three slides will show some of the challenges that we face. The ponds, they're fenced. I like to call them ponds in a prison. They're certainly not inviting or very conducive to service public space. The roadways out there have a very industrial look to them. Some segments have guardrails, there's fencing along them, an abundance of overhead transmission lines and distribution lines. Again, not conducive to create this sense-of-place effort. The electric transmission towers, they actually run through the middle of the ponds and biotech the ponds, and this eliminates some potential valuable space that we can use for public use. So we embarked upon a collaborative effort. We've taken these challenges, and we developed a stormwater project that not only incorporates the stormwater elements, but multiple elements. This slide shows our current concept plan. Again, this is a stormwater project, but we're going to provide retrofit that'll improve the quality of discharges to Lake Jackson. But we've been opportunistic in our approach, and we've developed a multi-purpose project that is going to help us to jumpstart those sense-of-place efforts. We've taken advantage of the electric liability project. We're going to take the transmission lines that run through the middle of this project and move it over toward the roadway. This will help free up and create some of that public space. We're going to do an underbuild with those electric transmission lines, so all the distribution lines that you currently see along the roadway will be placed up underneath the transmission towers, again, creating a much more aesthetically pleasing environment. In the east facility, we're going to try to create a visually inviting landscape pond, put some trails around it, some parkours, and something that'll really be viewed as a jewel in the area. The central facility, which you see, we will remove the fencing that surrounds this pond, completely fill in the pond, and create a green space that'll serve for whatever the future public uses entail. We're also going to construct a parking lot on the west side of the Central Park area that'll serve as a buffer between the electric pump station and the public use area. The roadways, McClay Commerce Boulevard, we'll put sidewalks on both sides of the roadway, put in some landscape buffering, create something similar to what you see with Falmouth Way. On the west side, we're going to have a much larger and improved stormwater facility. This is where we get our bang for the bucks. We're going to improve the quality of water that leaves our development areas and go down to Lake Jackson, discharge of Lake Jackson. The trails that you see winding through there actually serve three different purposes. One, it's going to help us improve our stormwater treatment. It's going to serve as access to the transmission towers on that side of the property, and it'll also provide the opportunity for some trails and walkways. We'll also leave a large buffer area on the north side of the property to buffer some of the residential areas. Where are we? We're already under construction. We've started de-watering the ponds, at least before today's rain hits, so hopefully they'll stay de-watered. We're filling the southern edge of the east facility to accommodate the relocation of the transmission towers and the future roadway improvements. And the central facility, as I said before, will be completely filled in. The fill from this work's going to come from our west facility, so this is a tremendous cost savings for us. We've already started construction, so we're starting to clear that area, move that fill over to the central and eastern ponds. With that, that concludes the stormwater portion, and I'd like to turn it over to Blas Gomez, who will cover the water and sewer elements.
Thank you, Jody. We currently have over 50 water and sewer projects with an investment of about $45 million. Our main objective of all these projects is to support the growth of our community, where we keep our infrastructure in reliable condition. Master planning is the way we do our work. That's what guides our work. We have 20-year master plans that have been approved by the City Commission, and we use state-of-the-art technology to inspect, evaluate, maintain, and replace our utility infrastructure. We'd like to take this opportunity to thank the City Commission for your support so that we can provide our customers with safe, efficient, affordable, and high-quality of service. Although our investments, our projects are system-wide, as Mr. Bus showed early today, I'd like to share with you three projects in some key priority areas as examples of our efforts. The first project I'd like to share with you is the Silver Ridge Estates Sewer Improvements. This project supports the City Commission's Southern Strategy Initiative, and we're spending $2.3 million to replace two, let's see if I can point to the, am I going the other way? I see, I'm going to point to the two pump stations that we have. One of them is located right here, the other one is in that neighborhood. And then we built a new, replaced a sewer line behind these homes along Sunnyside Drive. Like Jody mentioned on his project, it was also a complex project. The sewer that we replaced was in the back of 33 houses. We had to buy even one house to be able to access the project to do the work. Especially, that sewer replacement included acquiring 33 easements from those property owners where we're working in the bar yards. We have close, we work very closely with residents through public meetings, many one-on-one meetings with them. Also, we had monthly reports. And at a recent corner meeting, a neighborhood representative was very complimentary of the way we proceed in our work on how we execute this project. And not only, they were pleased with the aspect of the technical part of it, but also we were very successful in replanting and coordinating with all the neighbors and stakeholders. We have recently initiated the paving of Ridge Road. We had not started that because we were in for completion of the pump station, but we have just started the repaving of Ridge Road, and that's also something that is going to be significant improvement to the neighborhood. The second project I'd like to share with you is the Pensacola and Martin Luther King Water and Sewer Improvements. This project was an investment of $1.8 million to support also the City Commission's efforts to improve and reactivate the downtown area. It had been completed, and not only we replaced aging infrastructure, but we also built some improvements that have been constructed with sufficient capacity to support the fast-paced redevelopment that is taking in the downtown area. Most of the work was done at night to minimize impacts and traffic disruptions. And it took also significant coordination with the School of Law, the Civic Center, FSU, some apartment complexes, and also some of the businesses in that area. And the third project that I'd like to share with you is one that we have going on as we speak on Fourth Avenue that includes drainage improvements and also utility water and sewer improvements. This also probably also represents a significant capital improvement in support of the City Commission's efforts to redevelopment in the Frenchtown area. We're spending $2.8 million on this project to replace aging infrastructure and reduce localized flooding. After completion of the infrastructure improvements, the entire section of the road where the work is being done will be completely repaved. Like in the other projects, we had extensive coordination with the residents, with businesses, and so far, we have received only a few customer inquiries into the construction progress in the work. That's, I wanted to share that picture with you, which shows some of the extent of the significant work that we're doing right at the corner of Fourth Avenue and Gibbs. So that's, those are the three projects that we wanted to share with you, and now I'd like to turn it over to Steve Schaefer, who will discuss the street and sidewalk projects.
Well, I have an important question first. So is the dairy equipment pink or purple?
It's pink.
Just want to be clear.
It's pink, and you see the, you know, the fight against cancer ribbon there.
Right.
Okay, thank you, Blas. As you know, last year, the Commission had a special focus on public infrastructure with an even sharper focus on streets and sidewalks. So I'm going to talk to you a little bit about the progress that we've been able to make toward that focus, starting with a discussion of some of the capital projects that we were be able to make progress on. You approved through the capital budget process last year three new sidewalks that we've mentioned here, Shamrock Street, Polk Drive, and Putnam. Shamrock, we've actually been able to get going into construction earlier than the others. It was shovel-ready, basically. We had plenty of ride-aways that allowed us to get started back in December of last year, making good progress. We finished the first phase near Shannon Lakes, and we're working now on the second phase. We expect to have that two miles' worth of sidewalk completed by the end of the year. Polk Drive and Putnam Drive are both, we're making great progress on those, both of those. We are a little more constrained with the ride-away. We've got a little more design details that we have to address and permitting issues. Design is well underway. We have construction funded for both of those next year. We are also, because those projects were funded with city dollars, of course, we are always actively pursuing opportunities to find additional funding to kind of bridge the gap in between our funding and our needs. So we've been very successful in the last couple of years working with DOT, and they have provided some funding for a couple of the high-profile sidewalk projects we've completed recently. The pictures here are of Sixth Avenue between Thomasville Road and Colonial, or Monroe and Gadsden Street, I apologize, and that just recently completed. It's a good pedestrian connection in Midtown. We also had funding from them to complete a sidewalk connection on Seventh Avenue from Thomasville to Colonial. In addition to that, we've got In addition to that, we've got approved funding from DOT for the Glenview Drive sidewalk project. We expect to start construction of that next year, and we've also recently been approved for funding for several safe routes to school projects, as listed up here, with funding expected for those in FY '19. So, just in this last couple of years, we've been able to leverage our funding with additional over $2.4 million of funding from the state to help support our sidewalk connectivity needs. In addition to sidewalks, you put a focus on streets, and as far as capital improvements to streets, in the past, the program we've used to address those has been -- the main program has been the PAST program, Pedestrian and Street Safety Program. Purpose of that program is to improve the safety on substandard streets, typically done by closing ditches, constructing curb and gutter, sidewalks and bike lanes where it's appropriate. The last major funding for that program came from the '89 sales tax, and since then, we've had a reduced funding level for it. But through your support, and through the 2017 budget process, you approved $2.4 million for -- to go toward the PAST program in '17, and in the five-year CIP, 19.4, we specifically addressed or added through that process these two projects shown here, Richview Road and Zyla Street. And you can see both of those have a strong need for some improvements to protect not only vehicles, but pedestrians and bicyclists. So, that is the focus that we've -- and the progress we've made on the capital projects, and that provides new infrastructure of equal importance, and maybe even greater importance, is the need to address maintenance of our existing assets. We have, through the reorganization, have an improved processes available to us now to look at different ways of addressing these maintenance issues. The traditional approach for paving, and you've heard this before, funding went toward those streets that were in the worst condition, so it was a worst-first basis for funding of those needs. And paving and sidewalks typically became a complaint-driven process. That's not very productive. We are now able, through the reorganization, to move, and your support, to move to a new approach, which is more of an asset management process, master planning of these improvements, and it will provide data that allows us to have data-driven decisions, much more efficient. So, what is involved in a pavement asset management program? Generally, what this is, and maybe the best way to think of this, is it's a shift from what the industry calls routine maintenance to preventive maintenance. If you think of your car, it's a difference between keeping up with oil and all the things you need to do to keep your car in good shape versus waiting till you hear things going wrong with it and taking it in for a major engine overhaul. So, routine maintenance typically would include things like constructing or reconstructing, rehabilitating versus preventive, which would be preserving and maintaining our infrastructure. Routine maintenance is reactive, preventive is proactive and planned, routine restores pavement life, preventive maintenance extends pavement life, and the big deal here is routine maintenance has a very high unit cost, whereas preventive maintenance can be done at a much lower unit cost. So, the things that go into a good pavement asset management program, inputs, the existing condition of the streets is critical. The more data we have about the existing condition, the better we can plan the types of improvements and figure out where our dollars should be spent. The available treatment processes and the cost of those processes are critical to go into the program. We need to know what our level of service goals are and what our available funding's going to be. And with that, the output from the master plan would be a five-year pavement management master plan, and which provides data-driven projection also of funding needs, and you're going to hear a lot about data. The things that we can do because of the data we are now able to acquire, it makes a huge difference in this program. So, I think, Jody, you said you're geeking out on yours. I think I can out-geek him on this. This is where pavement nerds get kind of excited. We are now, because of the support we've had, we have new technology available to us to start collecting this data. The technology allows for greater accuracy and reliability and provides data needed to make intelligent decisions. This cool vehicle on the right here, Road Surface Tester, is fitted with lasers and electronic device. In the past, to do an inspection, we would drive by, look through the windshield, and try to estimate how much -- how many patches are there, the potholes, ravelling, cracks, that type of thing.
I used to have a '72 Pinto that could do the same thing.
We're going to get a copy of that. This vehicle now will actually go in with this electronic equipment, can detect, measure, and record all of these that it drives over. Huge difference. So, it's picking up every crack, the rutting, the potholes, through the entire network of our roadway system. And as cool as that is, and it's cool, it's still just picking up the things that are visible from the surface. We also have the capability now with this other piece of equipment to look underneath the surface, things we could never see before. It can test the subgrade and the soils that support the roadway, and we're doing this on our higher-volume roadways, provides invaluable data to allow us to have a better idea exactly what's going on with our roads, both on the surface and underneath. So, this stuff's exciting. Sorry, Jody, you're just awesome to hear, I guess. When you combine the information that comes out of these, we come up with what we call pavement condition index, and we're going to be talking about that a little bit as we move forward here. Basically, it generally tells you on any road segment, what is the condition of that road segment. We showed you this graph last year as basically a pavement condition versus time. It seems confusing, but it's not really. If you look at the left side, the vertical axis, it tells you what the condition of your pavement is, and at the top, it shows 100. That's a brand-new roadway. You go down to the bottom, it's zero, and that has no value at all. And then on the horizontal axis, it's a time and year, so from zero years out to -- it extends it out to 50 years. The red line indicates the natural degrading of asphalt pavement over time. So, it starts out in great shape at 100, when it's brand-new. You go through the years, and eventually, you're going to have no value left. The only way to stop or slow that degradation is through maintenance activities. The industry generalizes these categories, so the industry would say that anything with a PCI between 85 and 100 is excellent shape. 85 down to 70 is very good. You get below 40, and it's poor, very poor condition. That line that just went on there, we'll talk more about this. When we start talking -- when we talk about preservation versus rehabilitation, the preservation can only be done when a road's in good condition, so in that first 10, 15 years, that's when you would apply the preservation treatments. You get past that, and the road degrades below that 60 mark, then you get into the more costly rehabilitation treatments. So, this is a chart that shows the data points that we've got already from the assessments we've done. You'll see, every one of those dots is a segment of our roadway network. A segment is basically a block. We've got 6,500 segments on there. You can see, once again, you look at the bottom, it's a PCI graph on the bottom. Great-conditioned roadways are on the far right. The roadways that are a little less good are in the middle, and the further left they are, the more they've degraded. That 6,500 points, every one of those points has dozens of pieces of data associated with it. So, that represents close to a quarter-million pieces of data that we now have on our roadway system that we have not had before. We're able to pick that data up in two months through this technology. In the past, it's taken us three years to get through our whole system and didn't have a fraction of the data we have now. So, this is huge to us to be able to determine what and how we spend our dollars. So, in addition to the condition of the roadway, we have to take into account the available treatment options. So, I'm going to kind of run through a few of these, and what's important to see here is that each one of these, you'll see the graph on the right, once again, it's a pavement condition, and it goes from 0 to 100, and the target PCI says for this particular treatment, this is the condition the road would be in when you have to use this treatment. So, in the past, when you think resurfacing, you're thinking about us going out, just like this picture shows, and milling and resurfacing, taking all the old asphalt off and putting on new asphalt. Very costly, and you can see, $53 a square yard is a typical price for doing something like that. You would typically do that when you're down at a target PCI of around 30. So, that's a road that's degraded quite a bit. As we move through these, we'll see that the target PCI goes up, so as you go further up, that means we have to hit these roads earlier in their life, and the cost goes down, the unit cost goes down. So, this thick overlay is $27 a yard, and you have to hit that when the PCI's about 40. Keep going up. This is a standard overlay, $22 a yard, PCI of 55. Here's a treatment that we have, a hot-and-place recycling, it's down to $15 a square yard. Then we get up into what we call our preservation treatments. So, this is micro-surfacing. This is something we have to do before it goes below 60. And look at the cost on this one compared to the others, $3.50 a yard. You can see how much more work you can get done when you hit these up here than if you let them get down to where it becomes much more costly. And at the very top of it, a seal coat, we could do something like that for $2 a square yard, you're doing that, two roads are in very condition, and it basically extends the life, keeps the sun and the water off the pavement, which are the kind of the killers of asphalt. So, this graph is pavement management 101. Everything you want to know about how we optimize our treatments and our costs can be kind of covered right here. We talked before, each one of these red dots is the condition of a road, a road segment. Each one of these boxes represents one of those different treatment types we talked about. So, the boxes on the right, and once again, the scale on the bottom is the condition of the pavement. On the right, very good condition; on the left, not good condition. Those boxes on the right, the treatments on the right are low-cost treatments. Those are the ones we like to focus on. The ones on the left and lower are the high-cost treatments. So, these vertical lines, you see the green vertical lines, is that's the limit for when you can use a particular treatment. If you remember, and you look at this next one, these segments, that's a static picture you're looking at, but it's not a static condition. If you remember the time versus condition, they're all floating to the left and getting worse over time. So, as these go left, they go from a point where you can do a certain treatment. You wait too long, it goes over a green line, you have to go to a more costly treatment. That is the goal, to keep that from happening. So, the key to funding optimization is to apply these treatments prior to the real condition, degrading to the point where you have to go to the next, more expensive treatment. So, if you see those yellow bands, we're looking for those segments that, on the right side of that green line, they're going to be going to the left side in the next year or two, and we want to try to address those before they get to a more costly treatment. Okay. With all that input, what comes out of that? Well, we get a really good understanding of the condition of our network, and we start to get a feel for the funding necessary to maintain that condition. So, that's what this graph is doing, it's showing correlation between annual funding on a five -- for a five-year program to the resulting condition of the pavement at the end of that five years. The box on the furthest right, the red one, shows that in order to maintain our current level of condition, it would require approximately $6.5 million a year of annual funding. Now, we understand that it may not be possible to fund at that level, so we provided these boxes, and as you go down to a lesser annual funding each year, you'll see a corresponding less -- a lowering of the resulting PCI. What's important to remember is that as the PCI goes down, it becomes more costly to recover from that. So, maintaining a status -- a steady state at 6.5 now is doable. If we let this go down to 63, 62, to try to get that back up will cost a lot more than maintaining it would right now. Other issues that we have to consider when we're master planning. Obviously, the last thing we want to do is resurface a road, and the next month or year, we go in there and start cutting up for utilities that have to be upgraded or capital projects. So, there's a lot of coordination that has to take place between the other infrastructure and other impactful projects as we put together this master plan. We -- anytime we're thinking about resurfacing a road, we have our utilities folks go out there and assess the condition of the existing utilities. Often, that results in the need to upgrade services or lines, and that takes time and takes planning. So, all this has to be incorporated into the master plan. I will say, since the reorganization, when we merged Public Works with Utilities, that planning is a lot easier. The coordination's a lot easier. We're not talking across departments now. We're talking amongst our own department, between floors. So, it's been really, really helpful. This is a really important concept as we move forward. There will always be a perception by the public that somebody may be getting treatment on a road that's in better shape than the road that they live on. And if we talk about preservation versus rehabilitation, that's an important concept. We understand it seems counterintuitive, but it's critical for the program to work to understand that we have to put dollars into the preservation, even if it delays a little bit, some of the restoration or rehabilitation we have to do on worse roads. So, that really is an educational effort that we have to put out there to the public so they understand that there's a method to our madness, if you will. And it's also really important, as we put this together, as you heard, all the coordination that goes into it, to work the plan. You're going to get your best cost benefit by staying within the confines of the plan. We want to try to minimize to the greatest extent possible having to do projects, emergency projects outside of the plan, because it creates a snowball effect with other impacts, either utility adjustments that we have to then move around, or some of the ADA improvements and that kind of thing. So, it's very important to try to stay within the plan's schedule. So, that was a discussion on pavement. We have a similar discussion, although much shorter, on sidewalk asset management. We've got 500 miles of sidewalks within the city that we have to maintain. That's both city streets and county roads. We are the maintaining entity for that. Once again, in the past, the traditional process, we did not have, in the past, a dedicated funding source for that. We actually stole funding sometime from the resurfacing program to address some of the worst of the sidewalk issues that we had. We dealt with things based on complaints, and that did not adequately address the backlog that we have of sidewalk issue. So, with your support and with some funding that you approved last year, we have a new process. We've got the dedicated funding and dedicated resources now to address these issues. We -- you approved $825,000 last year, and it looks like a recurring amount that we're going to be looking for, but staff is now actively inspecting and recording these issues. So, we're not waiting for phone calls. We are out there looking for them, we're recording them. In this year, we expect that we're going to be able to complete about 30% of our inspection of the entire 500-mile network. We expect to identify 5,000 condition issues this year, and we think that we'll be able to make repairs on about 2,500 this year. So, that is something that we're going to continue looking at, continue working for, and we appreciate that the commitment you've made through funding this in a dedicated manner. We've got some other sidewalk achievements that we've been working on. We're making great progress. Matter of fact, we are closing on and being complete with all of the ADA issues that were identified in the Access Now settlement. This is just one that we've done recently, Fifth Avenue, hard to tell from this picture, but that was clearly not a corridor that was accessible for anybody, and we went in there and actually not only made it accessible, but made it an attractive connection there in front of Bellis. Other things that we're working on, we look for opportunities to fill in some of the missing links that aren't major sidewalk projects. This is one on Bluntstown Street. This actually resulted from, we had a citizen who lived in the subdivision on the upper side of this, who was in a wheelchair and had to access a bus stop, which is in the foreground here, and was having a lot of difficulties. So, our operations staff was able to go in there, make the connection, put a bus stop in. We're working with Star Metro to get an amenity put in there, so this has been a big benefit for our citizens in the area. So, that basically completes what's next. And just in summary, we still need to complete the analysis. We've got a lot of the data there. There's still work to be done to get that completed. We'll use that data to determine long-range funding needs, and we will come back to you all through the 2018 budget cycle to give you a better idea of the condition specifics of the condition of our roadway network and potential funding needs, and where different funding levels would result in pavement condition.
Thank you very much for the presentation, Commissioner Zephyr.
Okay, sidewalks, because we can't be the only one that are constantly having to go out and repair the same section over and over again because of oak trees and their roots knocking the sidewalks up. Is there anything we can do in the place of concrete? You know, I've seen in other markets where they put pavers down, and yeah, they've got to go out every once in a while and pull the pavers up and re-sand it and put them down, but that seems-- but that seems, isn't that less expensive and easier than going out and ripping up concrete?
In, in some cases it is. Some of the issues with, with pavers, though, is, as soon as the, the tree root impacts that, then it creates an immediately a trip hazard, they're less resistant to the tree roots. There are some, some flexible products out there that we're looking at, and we've used on occasion, so we're looking at that. We also have a little project study going on to look at diff, the effect and benefits of different type of root barriers, so we're looking at that, and we'll definitely include that in, as we move forward.
Is it possible for us to be even more preemptive, and that is, why don't I use that word, I shouldn't use that, let me use a different word. Forward-thinking in landscaping plans? In other words, like Southwood, for example, all these oak tree, and I'm, I'm not a, I'm not a, a, a master craftsman gardener, or whatever they are, but it seems to me they put the oak trees between the street and the sidewalk, and the irrigation system is on the other side of the sidewalk for all these homes. And if I know trees, roots grow to where the water is, and so, the roots are going towards it. Can't we, when it comes to new developments, like I know where Wilani, for example, I don't know what the, the street landscape plan is there, but it seems to me we need to be looking at, are we putting trees where we're just going to be creating more problems for us in the future?
You bring up a, a very good point, and as Steve said, we're, we're looking at engineered solutions, a couple of things, but, but this point of preventive is very good. And, you know, there, there's some studies going on, on the, what's the downtown urban road plan, can't think of the name of that.
Urban Forest Master Plan.
No, no, the road, the planning for, for the urban area.
Oh, multimodal district.
Multi-modal district. Once that starts to progress a little further, we really want to engage with the planning department on this specific problem you're talking about, because the right hand is creating problems for the left hand, and, you know, we want a forested city, but there's a limit to what we can afford, and the trees need to be where they're not causing such a problem. I mean, I could show you pictures where it just looks like a roller coaster.
So, so, does anybody know what we're doing at Canopy, or Wilani, whatever you want to call it? Are the trees, are we, are we creating the same problem over again?
I, I believe the current plan shows a similar section that we have approved in the multimodal district. I don't know that we have finalized the species that we think are the appropriate species to go in there, so there's still some additional work that can be done to finalize that.
Okay. But we're thinking about it.
Yeah, Commissioner, actually, I think this is a good point, just to, just to highlight the, the collaboration, that's been a point of emphasis, and, and Steve talked about that and others, in terms of how we collaborate across departments in different areas. That's a point of emphasis for us. I think in the case of Wilani, we still have an opportunity, because it's a, obviously a very new development. We've been thinking about these things, John talked about that, whether it's through our construction technique or through the planning, because I think, I think both can, can deal with that issue maybe in, in unison. Definitely in the, the works, if you will, the collaboration between different areas.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Richardson.
In response to, to Commissioner Ziffer's inquiry, I know on Orange Avenue, when they put the sidewalk on Orange Avenue, right at Wanish Way and Orange Avenue, there was, there were two live oaks right on the street, and they, they put a material, it's not concrete, I don't know what the material is, but it, it goes around the trees, and I, I assume that they put it there to address that very issue. Are you all familiar with, with that?
We are, and, and we've done a little bit of that, we've done some of the flexible, and we've also created some above-grade boardwalked-up sidewalks to try to get them over the impacts from the roots.
Right, right, I've seen that. A couple of questions that I had, and when, when it comes to sidewalks, are you all, are you all looking at the entire, our entire system of sidewalks throughout the city? And, and the reason I ask that question is because sometimes there are areas where people won't complain. There, there will be instances where the sidewalk has buckled, but people just don't complain.
You're, you're right, and that's one of the huge benefits in going from where we have been complaint-driven to something more proactive, and we were absolutely out there assessing the entire community, and will develop a, a list of the needs and start addressing them.
Okay. And then, with the, when the sewer system was replaced in Silver Ridge, the couple of times that I went out there, there, there's a water body, I don't know if it's a lake or if it's a stormwater retention area, but it is really in bad shape. I don't know if they brought that to you all's attention, that it needed cleaning, but...
The sewer that we rebuilt is next, was next to Silver Lake, that's where it was, and we moved, right, we moved it up from where the location that it was, it was a lower location, we made away from the lake.
It's, it's not a stormwater pond, though, it's, it's private property and a natural lake.
Oh, private property, okay.
And through the years, you know, we've, we've discussed programs, but accepting responsibility for the maintenance of these private lakes could get very, very expensive. In general, we say we don't do lakes management, we maintain the, the public stormwater system, but, you know, for water quality and flood control, et cetera, aesthetics, that's a real, real challenge, yeah.
Okay. The other question that I had was the retention pond on Or, on Orange Avenue, at Orange Avenue and Meridian, the southwest corner, where that service station is currently. What's the long-term plan for that? I know there's been some discussion about that and tying it into the...
You know, that, number one, that's a county facility, and Orange Avenue, because Orange Avenue was a county road and they did that improvement. That was discussed, though, some improvement to that as part of sales tax, the future sales tax revenue, and I believe that falls into that water quality bucket where there's $280 million worth of wants and $85 million worth of funds. So, I think that discussion is, is yet to come.
Okay. Because that, that really could be an amenity for that area, particularly because there's not much walkability in that area, there are not many sidewalks, and so, that could be an amenity, and it could tie that area to the student apartment complexes that are just south of that.
And we did an improvement right up the road from there, Jody, I can't remember the name of that, not...
Tartry Drive Improvement.
Tartry, right, and we, and we put a sidewalk in there that connected two neighborhoods and brought them through that project that we built up there. So, there are some opportunities if the money's available, I guess that's all I have to say.
And, and then one other issue, and I brought it to the attention of the manager yesterday, and I don't know if it's a Parks and Rec issue, or a stormwater issue, or, or the two departments working together, but the condition of, of Carter Howell Strong Park in Frenchtown is, it's unbelievable. And I, I know we, since I've been on the commission, I, I raised that issue, and we went out and, and it was maintained, but that, that body, like I said, I don't know, and I don't know if we've got a regular schedule of maintenance for that, but currently, it is, it is in bad shape. Because my understanding is, is that the runoff, I guess from downtown or wherever it comes from, it brings all of the trash into that water body, and the, the trash traps break, and so, the, the trash just spreads out over that retention pond, and it's, it's very unsightly. So, I don't know what we can do about that, or...
Yes, sir, the manager shared that with us yesterday, and that'll be a multi-department approach, as it, it crosses different areas, but we do have routine maintenance of that. The departments have already been talking about increasing it because it was not adequate to deal with what, with the conditions we were seeing, so we appreciate you sharing that with us as well. And so, that's underway right away.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Miller, followed by Commissioner Maddox.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, first of all, I wanted to, on the point of the, the trees and the sidewalks, and you, first of all, we can't be the only people that have trees by our sidewalks. So, what do other people do in other places? Do they have a thicker sidewalk, maybe, more concrete? Do they have, what do they do? Because people want to walk on a sidewalk that's shaded, so if we're going to build all these sidewalks, we would like for people to use them, but if they're out there in the sun, anyway, you've got a, like, problem with that. So, understanding, though, that you cannot let people, can't wait until somebody trips and falls over the thing before, because the liability, and where's our attorney? You know, we've had these cases before, and it really is just dangerous, it's a danger to the public, so it has to be attended to, but I do wish you well on investigation, and I'd appreciate if y'all would spend some time doing that. You know, I was, I'm really pleased with the way you're coordinating the various underground utilities with the side, with the road construction and everything, but that means that all of those separate systems have a lifestyle, a lifestyle, they do have a lifestyle, but they also have a, a life cycle. And so, does one utility, say you've got really old water and sewer lines in a road, are you using that to, to help dictate priorities, I said, I guess? Is it a multi-utility approach that you take?
Yes, it is, and it's a two-way street. There could be occasions where the utility work drives the resurfacing, but what, what this holistic look, where we're looking at all the pavement segments allows us to do is to have a paving list, a proposed paving list, resurfacing list, that goes out a couple of years. That doesn't mean that is the work plan, but that's what utilities can then get their cameras out, get down into the pipes, and see whether they need to be replaced, and you may find the sewer needs to be replaced, but the water doesn't. Or frequently, maybe the water services have to be replaced, and that's all. So, the utilities could be looking out here in advance, looking at schedules and their ability to get work done, as well as fund the work. Very recently, we, working with DOT, have come up with a $4 million expense for the resurfacing of Monroe Street. So, you can sink a lot of money into the utility enhancements before resurfacing, and, and we really do need lead time to do it, and this process will allow that.
If we do go for, and I don't know what you want from us today, whether this is just an informational session, it's certainly at the right time in the budget process, and, but I have to observe, basically, you know, we deal with the five-year plan with the FDOT, with their, with CRTPA, we talk about five-year, 10-year, 20-year, et cetera, 50, but I can see with all of these utilities involved that it would really create a lot of problem if you were to, like, if we come in and decided we need for you to do something different. So, I guess I'm just really talking to my commissioners, all of us, all of us have to basically, you know, bite the bullet and, and say, we're leaving it up to you, and I am happy, though, I'm really happy not to see this be complaint-driven in this fact that, as Commissioner Richardson says, a lot of people don't bother to call, and you all seem to have the tools in place to make these assessments, and I think that from today, I hear you assuring us that you're out there assessing everything very critically. So, thank you for the data approach, and, I mean, I'm on board, but I've been on board for the last six years, so, I mean, I'm happy, happy, happy with the money that we've put into the budget over the last three or four years to, to start to address these things, because, you know, it's, it's really important, and I think it's one of the core functions that we have, so, thanks.
Absolutely. Commissioner Maddox, followed by Commissioner Richardson.
Great job, fantastic job. I thought that we were already doing this, because, you know, we're, we're at the 5,000-foot level rather than the lower level, but I, I mean, I can understand why we would be complaint-driven, I'm sorry, Kim, I can understand why we would be complaint-driven, that makes sense, over the years, and it's a vicious circle, because you're repairing things that seem to have the most need, but you're neglecting things that need to be repaired. So, here, here's my question for you. So, if, if we're changing to, which makes total sense, to maintain at a much less costly level roads that are in better shape, and instead of directing dollars toward ones that are in bad shape, at what point do the bad shape become a hazard where we completely redo them?
And, and that's a, a great question, and we are not going to ignore those streets that are in bad shape, and in the past, it's just that we put too much money into those at the expense of the ones that are in good shape. So, we will maintain a, a portion of the budget to address the worst of the worst, if you will, and we will constantly be looking at those to determine whether or not they prevent or provide safety concerns to us, as opposed to just convenience or rideability concerns.
That's what I was going to suggest, some type of fund that's set aside that says, okay, something's really bad, we're going to, you've got the ability and the mechanism to go make sure that it's not a hazard.
And that is definitely a standard piece of the pavement, the master planning of, and pavement management program.
In some extent, that will fall out naturally, there'll be some percent for that minor micro-surfacing or whatever, might be 15 or 20%, and there'll be money that is in the complete reconstruction. That's the very, very expensive work, so you don't get much of it done.
Right.
But we can massage this process as, as we go. The thing is, is that, you know, if you, if you were to take a road out of, out of the plan, or insert a road out of the plan, theoretically, although again, it's just a model, we are already at the optimum method of maintaining the overall network at a particular number at the lowest cost. It's a big cost, but it's the lowest. And so, if we start doing a lot of things out of sequence, obviously, a few, you can survive, but pretty soon, you certainly are changing the dynamic, and it's no longer the least-cost program, but that may be, you know, what we, what we want in some circumstances.
And I'd like to keep data, I know it's going to be difficult to compare because you have material costs that will be different year to year, and, and overall costs depending on, on the world economy, year to year, but I imagine we're going to see substantial savings and certainly efficiencies with, with this new model, so I think, I think it's a great job. Mr. Manager?
Thank you. I'm not the manager, he said, good job. Yes, Richardson, followed by Ziffer.
I lost my train of thought.
Just, just curious, because of the cost of oil, the way it's, you know, fluctuated, but it's fairly low, the cost of asphalt, I'm assuming, has followed that, too? I didn't hear, I'm sorry, the cost of asphalt. It's gone, gone down, I'm assuming, and now it's a little up than where it was, but it's still, in the last 10 years, it's probably fairly cost-effective now.
Absolutely. We're, we're taking advantage of that with our current contract prices.
Are we locked in any long-term, what are the long-term contracts that we're currently in on?
We're not locked in long-term contracts as far as maintaining current contract prices. Of course, every capital project we do is, is bid, and it's a little bid process, we have our continuing contracts with our asphalt providers, and there is a method in there to address fuel, cost escalation due to fuel prices, so it's, it's a managed process.
What about de-escalation?
Dips as well.
Commissioner, is there other questions? Commissioner Miller, followed by...
You know, one of my questions today was going to be, how much work are, how many jobs are you creating? And I appreciated the comments at the beginning, and that, it sounds like we're, we've got a bunch of folks, private sector people, that are out there working, just working for our citizens every day, and, and I think that's important to know, that those are the folks who do these, these jobs, and that they're absolutely necessity, you know, this is an absolute necessity to keep the city together, and, and that they are hired to do that. So, I'm glad, thank you for providing that, and I also want to say that I'm absolutely amazed at the level of work you guys are doing, and I guess this doesn't count electric, because they're, they have their own things going on, but that you're out there managing all these jobs. Please commend your staff.
Thank you for that, Commissioner. Commissioner Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What I was thinking about earlier was, well, first of all, I wanted to commend the manager and, and you all as well, for the phenomenal job that, that you're doing, because there are so many cities that, that don't pay attention to their infrastructure until it's a cri, at a crisis stage, and, and I think we're being proactive, planning not only for the near future, but planning beyond the horizon and putting funding in it. That's usually the other issue, there's not money available, even when you have a plan. And so, I want to commend city manager and, and staff for what you all have done in that regard, but where, also, this is important, when we talk about economic development, you have to have infrastructure in place in order to be able to address the, the economic development aspect, and that's something that we're going to be, we've already started focusing on, but of course, when the sales tax dollars start coming in, that's going to be an even greater emphasis in this community. And in order for us to be successful at that, you've got to have the infrastructure in place to move people around and to service the businesses that will be created. And also, when we talk about urban infill, and making sure that we have... And also, when we talk about urban infill and making sure that we have the infrastructure in place to accomplish that and to support that, as we, as we build within the urban services area, making sure that the infrastructure can accommodate that kind of infill development. So I think the community will be well-pleased at what we're doing and how we're addressing the infrastructure, but also planning for these elements as we go forward.
Thank you for that. Commissioner, and just to, as Commissioner Miller said, I agree that this is, this is part of the core function of what it is we do, and it's, it's one of the things that you can overlook until you go to some other cities, as Commissioner Richardson said, and it becomes painfully obvious when these kinds of things are not, are not paid attention to you, too, and you all do an exceptional job at doing that. We may not get to say thank you enough, frankly, because of how, you know, thoughtless it is to drive on a road, it should be more thoughtful. But how you can forget what it is that is required to come into play for you to move smoothly and safely around this community, and you all, we appreciate you for making that possible. I also want to mention on the level of service, I assume, Reese, as you mentioned earlier, similar to the parks and recreation system, that there are certain areas that you treat more than others. And I just want to cosign, particularly those sort of passive quasi-amenity stormwater facilities that we have. Commissioner Richardson called out one of them, but we got them in other parts of the city, that those obviously be at a higher level of, higher level of treatment throughout the community, because you can also see when they're not treated at a higher level. I think it shows up a little painfully in some of those areas and neighborhoods. We won't hold y'all any longer than is required, because with this past couple of days of rain, I'm imagining we have some weak trees, and with 60 miles per hour winds, wishing you all the very best, and one, that we come through this just fine, but two, in the cleanup, that you move swiftly and safely through that. If there are no other questions or comments, Commissioners, manager will adjourn.
See you for...
See you in a few minutes.
Should we start our meeting early and then go home?
Go home, nope. He's here, he's here.